Oh, seven oh one. Okay, call the meeting to order. Pledge of the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for what we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Carmen Rule and Larissa Bennett is absent. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Can I make a motion?
Second.
Second.
Mayor, you have two add-ons.
Okay.
The first add-on is number nine. It's for the app number. It's H eight five one zero two zero two. I don't want my daughter on TV or recording. I'm just making sure she's not here.
I don't think I've ever taken a picture.
Okay.
And also, we need to add on the agenda a prepay to the county for the foreclosure fees at two fifty per property. And that's only for the foreclosures. And the village does not bear any cost at all for foreclosure proceedings.
You said two fifty?
Each property, there's a $250 fee add-on to each and every property that is delinquent and going into foreclosure. So that we have to write a check to the county bi-weekly for those fees.
Okay.
Those are the two add-ons.
All right.
And I just need a roll call if you guys accept.
Okay, roll call. Yeah, we'll accept them. Roll call, Rochelle?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Yes. Approval minutes from December third, two thousand thirteen, joint meeting and village board meeting, have a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Rochelle?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Yes. Approval of bills in an amount of four hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents, can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Rochelle?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution granted approval by the village board for a ministry to be located at Two Home Street, can I have a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Second?
Second.
I think that's nice. We have some, a nice ministry going on in the village of Monticello. I think everybody would be grateful for the village and it's good for the village. Religion is good for everybody, so. Yes, okay, roll call. Can I have a roll call, Rochelle?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
It's good.
Yep. Okay, number nine. Resolution authorized emergency spending of seven thousand for the removal and cleanup of the equipment used to demo the old justice court building, can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
With a discussion?
Okay.
We are gonna get reimbursed?
It's gonna be submitted to the insurance company.
Okay.
His insurance company.
Okay.
All right. Okay, roll call, Rochelle?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Resolution authorizing the RFP forbidding of various properties in the village of Monticello. RFP due date no later than January sixth, two thousand fourteen, three P M. Attention of village clerk, can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
I second it.
Roll call, Rochelle?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution of agreement for the annexation of one ten East Broadway, SBL thirty-one dash one dash thirteen, in the village of Monticello, can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Rochelle?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, public comment? Anyone for public comment?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah, the addendums.
See, addendum the first one. Well, the number nine was just the app number, which was H eight five one zero two oh two.
Okay.
That was for the seven thousand. And the second one is a prepay to the county for the foreclosure fees.
I make a motion.
Okay, second?
I second it.
Okay, roll call, Rochelle?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we can go on public comment?
The number nine there, the seven thousand, is for the machines that were already cleaned and moved here.
Yes.
Yes, with the reimbursement and insurance. So make sure you guys.
So the seven thousand will be reimbursed?
Yes.
Yes, it will be submitted to the insurance.
There's no guarantee that.
This is not.
All right, okay. All right. What I wanna do is read some quick projects that the future projects. These are some of the future projects that are coming onboard in the village of Monticello. And these projects have been approved. East Broadway commercial project annexed into the village. Project consists of new one hundred room hotel, two restaurants. One oh two Waverly Avenue, a project near completed, consists of sixteen thousand square foot, a new shul, and eight Waverly Avenue, project near completed. Replacement of eight units, two buildings. Owner looking to expand the complex. Crawford Library, that's a, that's center of Broadway renovation. They're gonna renovate at a six million dollars. It's a grant of four parcels. Broadway and Bennett Street, restaurant office space on second floor. The owner is David King. West Broadway Villas Apartment Complex, that's West Broadway. New community center, four thousand square foot, rehab their entire complex. Will break ground shortly, low income housing, six million dollar grant.
Where's that?
That's West Broadway, to your right, that's the Villas there?
Yes, that's four fifty Broadway, the Villas, yes.
Tommy Ting Projects, that's a project of the results of the grants and they're moving forward. That's the Jazz Club, a replica of B.B. King's down in Manhattan, that's eighty percent completed. Bed and Breakfast, that's on Main Street on Broadway, that's fifty percent completed. That's the big yellow building on Broadway in the center there. Four fifty-two Broadway, Deli on first floor, office space on second floor. Five eleven Broadway, tire and oil change, garage, that's like a quick lube, it just opened up, that's open now.
Oh, okay.
Quick lube on.
The old Triant glass.
Right, right, the old Triant glass.
Oh, Triant glass, okay. It's right before the mobile?
And the old Scallywags on five twelve Broadway, that's, that's gonna be an Asian cuisine restaurant and a sports bar. That's another one that's coming.
That's a trouble though.
Barnet Road product, project, we annexed in eighty units, proposed ten more new units. What else? Waverly Avenue, Yeshiva, Beth Joseph, Deschinsky, they're looking to build ninety condos on Waverly. And then Spark Drive, they're looking to, no, that's Spark Drive, they're looking to use a, build a community, a senior census complex, that's a hundred and fifty-two units. That's right on the hill of Spark Drive there. There's a four fifty-three Broadway, proposed Puerto Rican restaurant, they're look, that's coming in. Four sixty-two Broadway, proposed pizza and restaurant. Town and Country, that's Forestburg Road, they're expanding that complex, someone bought that, that complex and they're expanding that there. Let's see, Forestburg Road, Outsiders using sewer for three hundred and fifty homes, that's in negotiations. Jefferson Street, the gentleman that owns Dunbar Towers, which is, Dunbar Towers is eighty percent. That's pretty much done.
What's going on there?
They wanna do, they wanna do a development there, that's a senior development they wanna do over here.
In the box malls.
Perfect.
Okay, Jefferson and box malls.
Yeah, that's gonna be on the same site.
Okay.
The seniors, it's gonna be on one side of it and they're gonna do a box mall on the other side.
Right.
That Jefferson side.
On Jefferson Street. And we're looking at the old hospital on, on High Street. It's, we talked to the developer, he wanted to do a seven-story, two hundred condos that we're talking to him about.
And that's the drawing right there.
Yeah, that's up there now.
That's, it's in rough draft right now, but that's the preliminary area.
That's them dealing with the building now, right?
Yeah, yeah. Sturgis Road, Sturgis Road, there's an old building, like, parallel to the, the bus station. Someone wants to buy that and do a two-story building, office building. The bids, I think the bids are going out today, right?
They'll go out tomorrow.
Tomorrow the bids are going out for that.
For what?
For office building. So there's a proposal, so the bids went out. We have a lot of projects that's going out. This is just some of them, and most of them, a lot of them are completed and we're just waiting to break ground. And, you know, it might, it might sound redundant, but a lot of these things that are before us, they're all guaranteeing us village jobs. That's the main concern, that we need jobs in this village. So that's about it.
Yeah, I mean, projection of jobs, like a projection.
I mean, quite a bit of jobs, this is, this would probably bring a couple hundred jobs in the village. And these are permanent jobs, building, people will work, clean, the whole nine yards, so it's great. We need jobs.
How does it affect our tax base?
Everything's on the tax roll.
If it's saved on the tax.
Everything that's in, everything on these projects, everything's single units, on Waverly, they're single units, all taxable. Nothing's in this, nothing's going forward in the village that's not taxable. So that's great for the village.
And what we did was, on Waverly Avenue, we made them subdivide each lot separately so they can't exempt it from the taxes. So that's what's part of the planning and all this negotiations with those projects.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone for public comment? Ref, do you?
I, I think that's good information because a lot of time the public don't know what is being done. And I, I'm so glad you did that to show that you're moving and you're doing something 'cause everybody with a negative opinion and say, well, nothing is moving, nothing is doing, but things is on the move and, and they need to let the people know so they, so they won't say that.
Right. And these projects are definitely moving forward and it's, since the gaming, everything has started and we're moving ahead, so that's great.
I have a question for you, Mayor Jenkins. Did these developers reach out to the village for, to you, or did you reach out yourself toward them, or was it mutual? How did that occur? How did these?
Mutual, mutual. As, as sitting, as sitting manager, I've reached out to a lot of projects in New York City, I've been there looking for projects. I had investors that wanted to come to New York to invest and I tried to entice them to come to Sullivan County, in which they are coming to Sullivan County. Some of the projects that I talked about are going to the town of Thompson because we didn't have large enough parcels. So China City's one of them. I talked to that developer about five years ago, so, but we didn't have the, we didn't have the space. So now they're in the, they're, they're at Rock Hill. I think they're in the planning process with the town of Thompson, and that's a big project. Anyone else? Yep.
Don't come up here, right, and have me number, charge, and you can walk down Broadway and just about see any store that you could imagine. Any store you could imagine, this place was so full of history up here. And I say all that to say this, I commend you on your job, I admire you. Last week, this place was full. It was full 'cause they was trying to vilify you. But you, you got a good heart, you're a good man, and you're doing what you're supposed to do. I appreciate the fact that you're trying to bring back jobs up here for everybody else. You know what I'm saying? And it is what it is. Yo, we go through, we make mistakes, we human beings, we make mistakes. Ain't nobody perfect. Ain't nobody on this planet perfect. We gonna make mistakes, but don't let that mistake get you down.
Very, very.
Keep your head up, keep doing what you're doing, man. Thumbs up.
Thank you. Thank you. This is for, this is not for, this is not for the mayor or the board, this is for us, the village residents. That's who we represent, to get these jobs in this village. We need jobs and the jobs are definitely gonna come to this village. I promise you that.
I have a last question.
Yep.
Where can the average village resident pick up a copy of that sheet that you're referring to so that we can follow along with what's actually going on in the village and what the village is doing?
Yeah, you could come to the village, you can come to the village tomorrow and we'll give them out. And these are active projects.
But anything that you want from the village is foillable. You can just go to the clerk and foil for it.
The Chilis Club and the, what's that, sports bar?
Yeah.
That's the one next to E. Philippi's?
Yeah, that's the old Scallywags.
Open and close, open and close. Yeah, I know, what are they gonna do different? Because I, I, my heart goes out to the original investors 'cause they had to put a half a million dollars into that store.
Yes.
Before they opened it up. I saw that picture, it was state of the art.
Well, it used to be, it was a buffet, but now they're doing a sports bar and it's a sitting and a, it's a high-end, it's a high-end restaurant, but affordable prices.
An Asian cuisine.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, they must have game plans for, for people. The place has been open and closed constantly. Yeah, right?
Yeah.
This is like four.
Four times.
Four, five times.
Well, they're gonna try for localizing as well, so they're gonna have a interior and they're gonna have a sports bar, so.
It's gonna be a buffet or just a regular restaurant?
No, not a buffet, a regular restaurant.
Oh, just a regular restaurant.
Affordable prices, which.
Yeah.
We need.
All right, anyone else?
The locals gotta understand, when we have businesses, you have to support them. That's the only way they're gonna stay open. That's the only way.
Yeah, we're true to China Town Vision, yeah.
Yeah. But everybody wants everything to come in, but then they don't support them. They have to support them. Yeah, you have to support, you have to come, stay local first and, and figure out if you, I may not have something, but I can make pop possibility, get it for you, 'cause there are specialties that people can order, but.
I mean, we need shopping here like they had in Middletown. It's a disgrace that we have to go to Orange County and spend our dollars and support jobs in Orange County as well as their tax base when we, when we're struggling here with the second poorest county in the state.
Yeah.
So stop doing it.
It still goes back to.
Well, there's nothing, excuse me, we love this, people would love to stop doing it, but there's no way for them to go. You have Walmart.
Just so long as you stand.
Basically, there's nothing to do with that.
Well, there are things that are happening.
It has to be diversity, we need more diversity as far as shopping.
It's happening.
It still boils down back to the same thing I just said.
I mean, I'm heart pressed to go to Orange County. I'll do Walmart.
We can, we can, we can open up a candle shop, we can open up a kid's store, we can open up, but if people don't support them, they're closing. They're, they're out of business.
And there is a stigmatism with that Broadway in a negative way with, I get from people 'cause, you know, going, there's people, lots of people. Safety issue. I mean, I don't see much of an issue at this point anymore, though, maybe I'm too oblivious.
You know something? If you look at, if you talk to the police chief, there's absolutely, there's very little crime on Broadway. Very little. So what you hear on Facebook and all of that, that's very little.
I say all.
I gotta tell you a story, something that happened to a family.
Charlie, I say all the time, when it comes to income tax time, come to Broadway and see how packed it is. Every single income tax place is flooded with people, so they don't have a problem walking to go get their incomes taxed off. So that's an excuse. That's just a poor excuse.
Poor excuse.
I, I park in my back of my parking lot for the last twenty-six years. And I can say, we're in business twenty-six years and I, I, I can't count none of the county workers, I can't count none of the village workers, I can't count any of these people that come, that are making decent salaries.
Well, this county also has a bad habit of, when somebody wants to come here, they shoot it down. Years ago, I found out that Ford Motor Company wanted to put a plant in the area of Bethel, they shot it down. Right after that, IBM wanted to put a big complex, they shot it down. A mushroom factory, a mushroom farm that would've employed three hundred people in the Bashikil area, if I'm not mistaken, they shot it down because of water. Water, there's nothing but water there. Bashikil has water. I mean, they have to take their heads out of the dark place and start to look at the brighter picture.
All right, anyone else for public comment?
There's one more thing that, that's been troubling on my mind, is that we, this, this trash, that this problem that we had over here, that, whatever the problem happened with the trash, but, you know, we have a bigger problem down on Waverly Avenue with, with the trash that's been on Waverly Avenue, and I haven't seen not one resident, not one taxpayer, not, none of you people go to the D E C or go to, who's the other, the Department of Labor and inform them as to what's going down on Waverly Avenue, the trash down there.
But that's known.
It's known, but there's nothing, has been done. And not only the, not only that, those people that, some of those people down there have cancer, some of those people have upper respiratory problem, maybe, and I hate to say this, I'm gonna say it, I'm gonna stick my neck out, maybe it's because most of them are minorities down there and they're not doing anything about them. But a lot of those people down there are sick down on Waverly Avenue. And so maybe the media, the news, Y N N, go down and do a story down on Waverly Avenue with the trash that's down there, the millions of tires that are sitting there.
Was the gentleman's name?
And so on and so forth.
The gentleman's name?
You know who the gentleman is.
Oh, yeah, I forget his name. Now, how come, we have the pile here that's always spoken about, how about where the fence is on Broadway? Is anything gonna be done with that rubble there?
That's, that's not, that has nothing to do with the village. That is privately owned.
That's privately owned.
That's privately owned.
Yep. Anyone else for public comment?
Have you heard from the insurance company that the money will be, that he will?
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Yeah, I'm not gonna answer that question. I won't answer that at this time.
Because that's, that's.
Not that question, 'cause it's in, there's some issues on that one.
All right, thank you so much.
Yep, okay. Anyone else for public comment? All right, Ms., Mrs. Allen?
Yes. Good evening. I give honor to God, to my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, to Mayor Jenkins, to Pastor Matthews, to Ms. Rochelle Massey, to, oh boy, Gandy, Ms. Gandy, and to my nephew, Mr. James Snowden, and to all assembled here. I'm just so grateful tonight and I thank God for you all. I'm just feeling up tonight, just approving our building. I'm really grateful and I thank God for my nephew, John Snowden, who has been so supportive and working hard with us with the building, and for everyone that have reached out to us. It's been a hard struggle, but God has brought us all the way. If it had not been for the Lord, I don't know where we would be. But it was by the grace of God that He has brought us this far. And I thank God for all the support from the communities that have reached out and contributed or donated, or all the churches and everyone that have prayed for us and everyone that have done anything for us, we are most grateful. And I thank God, I'm just so, I'm just so excited and happy tonight and I thank Him for all the things that you all are doing in the community, but I just thank God for our, for our ministry. My heart, hallelujah! It just says, hallelujah, I just thank the Lord, I just can't help it. And one thing, cause I'm not ashamed of the gospel, for it is the power of God and the salvation to all that believe. And I believe and I'm not ashamed tonight to stand here and to say that I thank God and I give Him the credit and I thank all of you for seeing that, the need for that building, for that ministry on Home Street. We intend to reach out to all races, all creeds, all colors, hallelujah, because God is not a God of color. He's a God of all. And I thank God tonight because of all and for all the work that you all have done and my nephew, all the work he has reached out in this village to try to help this get done. And my nephew, James, John, who has worked so hard and helped this building to, to come up to expectation what it's supposed to be. And for my husband, I thank God for my husband. He has been right by my side and I thank God for him and I love him, 'cause he's been really with me. Hallelujah! Thank you, Lord, thank you, Jesus, and I thank God for this. Thank you, Lord, and I thank God for him. I don't know what I would've done without him and my children. I thank God for my daughter, Pastor Abraham, and my son, Gerald Ali and Helen Ali and, and just all of them and all my relatives and friends. I just thank and praise God for everybody that has contributed and just, I'm just so full and I'm telling you, I am this, I am really happy. I'm happy, I thought I was so happy. Glory! Thank you, Lord, hallelujah!
Thank you.
Yes, Lord, thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah!
Thank you.
That's what it's about.
God will guide us through this village and makes the, he will flow and make the righteousness of this village go forward. It's happening as we live here today, it's going forward. There's nothing that can hold us, hold us back as long as we got the almighty God for all people, the paved the way of the village of Monticello. And it's working as we talk. Definitely working as we speak. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else, anyone else for?
Something that's bothering me is with that Waverly Avenue and the garbage is down there, 'cause I felt what you said, Rochelle, and it is true. It is true, you got elderly people down there that own homes, been living down there for years, many families.
Got them threatened.
Many's families.
Got them caught.
And that live behind garbage. And then this gentleman right here, I don't know his name.
Eli.
Eli, how you doing? But when you, when you say what you said, he said, well, that's known.
It is known.
It's known. Wait, right? And that's what the problem's at.
It's been brought up here before.
It's known and ain't nobody doing that about it, she's trying to do, she's bringing it up. It need to be changed, it need to be corrected. The problem need to be addressed.
Okay.
Period.
He'll do a story on it. All right, anyone else for public comment? We have to go on executive, did you want to say something? Oh, okay.
The projects that you have coming into the village and have been already put out there.
Approved.
Approved, right? And that's great, you know, and it, it shows a lot of progress because in, in years before, we didn't have that kind of progress here. Actually, the declining of our leadership in Monticello with the different boards before this one have, having, weren't too particular about getting things going on in Monticello. Now that we have something that, that somebody's willing to put their neck out and have things come into Monticello, of course, you, you know, you travel out of, out of the country just to try to bring something here to Monticello, which should be very appreciative. And I understand that when things start happening, it's just like in any other place. When different people put things, put, you know, start, start to put things together, then you have people later on that wanna come and they wanna control it. And they don't know that the original people that actually started the move, you know, should be the ones that see it through. Not someone to come in later on and say, well, okay, you see what I done for you, but you didn't really do it for me, the people before you did it. So I just wanted to commend the people on, on, on the board tonight, you know, saying like, you know, I really appreciate the fact that you guys really put yourselves out there to try to help Monticello, because I've been a resident here for a long time and I seen it in its heyday, I mean, not in its hey-hey day, but I seen it in its heyday, and now[1610.62] I mean, not in its hey, hey day, but I seen it in its heyday and now I see the declining of it and now hopefully I see the rebuilding of it, so, you know, I thank you guys.
Like I said, there's twenty, there's twenty, there's probably twenty-five projects that are coming to the village of Monticello, all approved. You know, I'd just like to thank James for one more thing, we had a, um, we had a furnace that was at a building.
Yeah.
There was, there was a furnace, it was practically brand new, the guy went, he, he changed it over to electric heating. So we had a furnace, the village was, their furnace broke down here in the village here, it's about a twenty thousand dollar furnace. We had, the gen- the gentleman donated to the village, we had our village guys take it o- from over there. They took it by parts, installed it, now we have a brand new furnace downstairs, it probably would've cost us twenty thousand dollars and we sit, and someone donated it to the village, to James Snowden, and when he installed it, it's working fine and that's what we have.
Everybody satisfied with the heat?
Yep, thank you, James.
Alright, I have to go on executive session for about five minutes to discuss personnel, can I have a motion?
Oh, I make a motion. I forgot to mention in my speech that on yesterday, my husband and I celebrated our fifty-sixth wedding anniversary.
Congratulations. Okay, can I have a motion, second? To go on executive session?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, roll call Rochelle?
Yes.
Reverend? Alright, we'll be back in five or ten, five minutes. Okay, can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
I make a motion.
Okay, second?
I second it.
Okay, roll call Rochelle?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews? Yes. Okay Rochelle, you wanna, do you wanna read that, uh, that consolidation, what we're doing?
Yes, um.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion for a consolidation of the both departments for Mr. Snowden, the building department and the rec department, would increase the salary of fifteen thousand dollars and that would save us thirty thousand dollars 'cause he's gonna be doing, um, both the, the building and the recreation. And then an increase of salary for Janine Gandy of thirty-five hundred dollars and Heather Shear from the building department, an increase of two dollars and fifty cents an hour for doing extra duties 'cause she's moving over there with Mr. Snowden to the recreation department. And I like to make, I make, I make a motion.
Alright, second?
I second it.
Okay, roll call Rochelle?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews? Okay, yes.
And just wanted Mr. Snowden and Mrs. Gandy to know that we appreciate you for all you do and I thank you very, very much and we're gonna have a good year this year.
Right, right, we'll move that, we're gonna move your department over there to the recreation department, and that'll be it. I like to.
We may gonna have a good year this year, it's over now, it's almost over.
I'd like to. A happy holiday and, uh, a beautiful Christmas and the village is moving forward. And thanks for your attendance and.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Have a motion, a motion to, uh, cancel, to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second it.
Okay, roll call, uh, Rochelle?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Snowden will be both the code enforcement officer and the head of recreation, Michael Greco.